We will call our meeting to order tonight. We're not if you do a roll call, please.
Gugan?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Ettinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here. Good to see you, Ron.
We're all pretty excited to have Ron back tonight. So if we could please rise, we have an invocation tonight by Pastor Paul Peabody from Grace Bible Church.
Let us pray. Oh God, thank you for allowing us to live in a community where a meeting like this is opened in prayer to you. Lord, our requests are simple tonight. We ask for wisdom and we thank you that you've promised to give it. The decisions made in a room like this affect individuals and our community as a whole. And so we ask that as information is presented, that you'll give the council wisdom, insight, and a clear understanding of the facts and their implications. We praise you for this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get to work here. Let's see if we have any amendments to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to amend the agenda to add executive session as allowed under Idaho Code 67, 2345, Categories B and F, to address an employment situation that arose after our agenda had been posted.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We will move on to presentations and we have an Ironman update. Mac is here to update us on Ironman 2015.
Mr. Mayor, Council, how are you doing?
Good.
Matt Cavassar, former race director, by the way. I got two purposes here tonight. One is to bring you up to date on what happened in 2014. Secondly, to introduce you to the new race director who will be onboard in 2015. Let me start with what happened this last year. This race caps out at about 3,150 athletes. And in 2014, that number was achieved about, oh, about the first of March, middle of March, somewhere along in there. Right now, we're setting at about 2,000 athletes are registered for this year's race in 2015, which so it means we're pretty much right onboard with where we've been in the past and look forward to another race. We looked at 2014 as a good event for us. And with that said, let me give you some figures that we recently got from a online survey that I thought was pretty important to us as far as a community. The athletes were given an exit interview and in doing so, they rated us at a 98.5% venue rating compared to other races in the country where that's pretty much top of the line for us. So the only thing that they downrated us on was public transportation and that was about 63%. But overall, with that kind of rating, accommodations, hotels, community cleanliness, all in the top 90 percentile as far as the ratings and in comparison to other events in the country. So that's a pretty good pat on the back for us as a community. You know, there's been a lot said here recently in the papers about what's happening at Ironman and what's going on with the event. I will assure you that WTC, who owns Ironman, World Travel and Corporation, wants to continue this race. 2017 is the end of that contract and with some of the things that have been discussed over the past few weeks and basically past month or so, we're pleased to tell you that we'll be here for another three years. So it's been a good stint for the race here. It's been an excellent venue for us. There's been a lot of things that have changed over the years from different race directors. I'm number three here as far as race directors in line. And every year seems to be a better race and more positive feedback from the athletes. I would like to tell you that in 2014, the Ironman Foundation gave back to this community $80,000 in grant dollars. I know we have a contract between the city and the Chamber and Ironman that's been publicized as being a six-digit figure, which is incorrect. That contract calls for $75,000 in-kind cooperation on both part of the city and the Chamber. But in return, like I said, the Ironman Foundation gave back $80,000 to this community last year. $10,000 of that went to the Crox Center, $10,000 went to the Boys and Girls Club, another $35,000 went to aid stations. And those aid stations represented numerous nonprofit groups throughout our community, everything from cross-country teams to SIDS Foundation, those kinds of situations. And then in addition, there was $15,000 given to the city for your programs as far as youth sports. It goes through a foundation process that you have. And then there was about $2,500 in awards to the fire department here as well as to two of the outlying fire districts. And then finally, there's about $2,500 that's generated from the kids' race that comes to this community. So it's still a pretty good chunk of money coming back to the community from a for-profit company. They believe very much in helping our community and I think that's something they've made consistent all through the years we've been here. Over the last seven years, there's been a total of $70,000 given to Crox Center alone. So as I just said a few minutes ago, this is my last year as a race director and we're lucky enough to have a young fellow come into our community. My name is Zach Ukage. Zach's a local boy here. His parents live here in Coeur d'Alene still. He's been with us for several years. He started as an intern with us with the Chamber. And I guess he drank the right Kool-Aid or the wrong Kool-Aid, I don't know which, but he decided to take on and fill in the position for the next few years for us. He's a graduate of University of Idaho. As I said, he worked for the Chamber. He's been involved with the Downtown Association. And he's got a couple of things he'll point out to you about changes that are coming up for 2015. But I want to thank the community, especially all those volunteers that backed me up all the last five years, which we can't do without. This community continues to give a tremendous amount to this event and to our community. I also want to thank all the staff from the police department, the fire departments, parks department. I can tell you from working outside the city confines, those folks are as honest and as hardworking as you can find. They've done a fantastic job and I've really enjoyed working with them. Sometimes they've lectured me about things I've done wrong, but I accept that. But overall, you can't ask for more cooperative bunch of individuals to help put on events in our community. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Zach and let him tell you what's going on for 2015. But 2014, just to summarize it, one big word was a success. And I thank the community and I thank you as the council and you the mayor for your support. Zach, up to you.
Mayor and council, I want to start by saying I'm honored and grateful to be here. Mac's truly leaving a legacy within Ironman. He's one of the most respected race directors that we've had that I know of. This is going to be a challenge for me. I've been in Boulder for the last five years, but I was born and raised in Coeur d'Alene. It's a, having traveled the country and seeing races around the country to include Puerto Rico and Canada, there isn't a community like Coeur d'Alene, given the people and the turnout we get with the volunteers. And that says a lot about who we are as a community. And when asked to step in for Mac, I didn't hesitate, obviously. I've learned everything I know from Mac, being his intern, and I've come up every year prior to the event to learn more about it in hopes of someday doing what I'm doing now. So that's who I am in a nutshell. But I do want to start with, obviously, we had a great year last year and we want to do the same thing this year. There aren't going to be many changes this year at all, actually. The course itself is remaining the same, including swim, bike, and run. The race will be on the 28th of June, same timeframes, everything like that. There are a couple minor adjustments we're going to do in working with the Chamber and the city and as well as the Downtown Association. We will be moving the Iron Kids Race to McEwen Park as opposed to City Park. And that will be on Saturday, June 27th at 9:00 a.m. I believe the Downtown Association will be doing something in conjunction after that running race. I'm not sure on the details on that. But this is going to be done to encourage people to come down and be part of the community, take part in the Iron Kids Race that the City Parks Department as well as us will be putting that race on for the community. We're expecting between 700 and 1,000, excuse me, 750 and 1,000 kids at that event. So it'll be a good event for the community, get people downtown and participating in their community. The other major change that we have is to alleviate the pressure on the town and downtown core is to move the street closure from first, on Sherman, between first and second, from Thursday, which it's been historically, to 11:59 a.m., or excuse me, 11:59, 12:00 a.m. on Saturday night, or Saturday morning, Friday night. What that's going to do is it's going to keep Sherman open all the way through Thursday to Saturday, which will then take the street Saturday, build our finish line up until Second Street. And then obviously, on Sunday, that whole street will be closed. But we will be leaving on Sherman, the intersections open for public to cross as opposed to barricading off all the way up to Sixth Street, which has been a problem in the past as far as getting people across the street to different businesses on race day. Let's see. I think other than that, those are the major changes that we have. Do you guys have any questions for us, myself?
Any questions for Zach?
Well, once again, I appreciate your time and we look forward to a great year with Ironman.
Yeah, I wanted to just thank Mac for all the work that he's done for all these years. And you have some big shoes to fill.
I do.
Because anything that Mac does, he doesn't do it halfway. He dives into it 100%. And he's been very passionate about Ironman and a great deal of the success that we've had in Ironman is due to Mac. So I want to thank you, Mac, and I know that Zach, you will do a great job as well. So we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much.
So next, we will have a levy update. And we have a presentation from Laura Winters from Rune Jaeger and then we have a message from Jim.
Well, Your Honor and members of the council, before we have this presentation, I wanted to make a comment on some concerns that we've heard recently about our communication or lack thereof. And I want to offer my apologies to you and to our community, particularly to people like Adrian, who were put in a very difficult position because of a lack of communication that we did not provide to her and to others. To the ad hoc committee that was formed and held expectations different than the actual outcome. To other community members, I really feel, they felt deceived and I'm sorry for that. I'm not sure that in terms of tree removal, the results might not have been any different. But we should have communicated the actual work as we understood it and made sure that everyone understood exactly what we intended to do out there. But I will tell you and the community that we will learn from this mistake and we will make sure that we do a better job of communicating in the future. Our communications director and I have already sat down and we're analyzing where we might have erred and we will try to do a better job in the future. So I apologize on behalf of my staff. And with that, I would turn it over to Rune Jaeger and let them begin their mission.
Good evening, council, mayor.
Good evening.
I'm Laura Winter. I'm a civil engineer with Rune Jaeger and Associates. And I'm here to provide you with an update on the levy certification project. As you know, the certification project has been going on since about 2013. The project is a...
Can I maybe just speak a little louder so that they can hear you?
Speak a little louder. The certification project is a process involved with engineering firm providing certification to FEMA for the structural stability of the levy. The certification process starts with a technical analysis that is performed by an engineering firm, which happens to be Rune Jaeger. And what we do is we determine if the levy meets the requirements or what improvements are necessary to meet the requirements of the Federal Code 44 CFR 6510. This technical analysis is quite detailed and some of the reports and modeling are listed down below. We performed a hydraulic model. We did an existing levy stability analysis. We did a stop plank erection demonstration. We performed an interior drainage analysis, a geotechnical evaluation of the levy, a biological assessment, a bank protection analysis, a vegetative analysis. We did a preliminary design of the recommended improvements and we developed an operations and maintenance manual. All of this analysis went into, here's your city crews performing the demonstration of the stop plank assembly. All of this analysis went into a CLOMER, which is a conditional letter of map revision, which is submitted to FEMA. And basically, the CLOMER provides FEMA with a preliminary look at the recommended improvements in order for the levy to meet the Federal Code 44 CFR 6510. Here's a waterside view of the I-Wall. Once we submit the CLOMER to FEMA, FEMA begins their review process. And their review process can be a lengthy process. As part of the CLOMER process, there's an iteration of questions that they may have concerning the submittal and questions are answered and they eventually come to an acceptance of the CLOMER, which provides a preliminary acceptance of the certification of the levy once the required improvements are complete. The Coeur d'Alene Floodworks Levy consists of an I-Wall, an earthen levy, and sheet pile closures. You can see the I-Wall here along the city beach. Once the CLOMER is submitted and we have identified the recommended improvements, then the completion of those improvements are the next step. Some of the recommended improvements that we have identified in the CLOMER is a permanent closure by the harbor center, improvements to openings in the I-Wall, improvements to the sheet pile closure, flood wall that will be constructed by the North Idaho Museum, the addition of dry wells within the interior. We addressed vegetation and we recommended erosion and slope repairs on the earthen levy. These are some of the levy closure improvements that were recommended. You can see the sheet pile wall in the upper left. Below is what we call opening 14. There will be some improvements within that opening. Up on the upper right is where the FEMA wall will be constructed along Northwest Boulevard. And the lower right is what we call opening number two. And it's some improvements to the concrete sill that the stop plank erection wall gets placed upon. Once the improvements are made, we submit a letter of map revision to FEMA. And what this is, is it's showing the improvements that we recommended have been completed. We also submit a required analysis and documentation and we show that the levy will provide a 1% annual chance flood protection and does meet all of the requirements of the 44 CFR 6510. This submittal is considered the certification of the levy. FEMA will then review the LOMER submittal. And once again, this can be a lengthy process. We will go through some iterations of answering questions that they have concerning us. When they accept the LOMER, that acceptance provides the FEMA accreditation of the levy. The timeline for the certification and the accreditation, from where we stand right now, the improvements are being phased in 2015 and 2016. At the completion of those required improvements, in 2016, we plan to submit the LOMER. And through the process of the submittal, the review and approval, we're hoping by 2017, we can have that accreditation. Any questions?
Questions, Wood.
Laura, you guys have done this before?
No, sir.
This is your first levy certification?
Yes.
So here's a real simple question. What would happen if we just blew it all off? Didn't do anything, just leave it alone?
If you abandon the project, you would lose your accreditation on the levy. And what that means is there would be a federal mandatory requirement for flood insurance for the properties that would no longer be considered in the levy-protected area behind the levy, since it would be no longer accredited by FEMA.
Is that bad?
Yes. Well, they can be, it can be pretty pricey, yes. There's also, FEMA is more reluctant to come in and help rebuild the levy or provide any kind of emergency aid in the event that there was a breach of the levy and a flood condition.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some questions and maybe staff might be able to answer some of these. And I'm talking about trees, which seems to be the big issue. So were you the ones who went through and determined which trees were going to stay and which trees were going to go, as well as how much vegetation was going to be pulled? Was that your job?
Yes. We provided within the CLOMER a recommendation for which trees needed to be removed from the levy. There were several components that were involved in that, that we looked at involved in that decision. There was certainly a component of tree health. There were certain trees that were identified as having health issues that needed to be removed from the levy. But there was also, there were trees that had roots that could, based on modeling that we did, intercept the levy core prism, which could create, if those trees were to topple, could create a breach in the levy or some structural issues with the levy. There's also trees that had roots within the levy core that could cause some heaving or piping, which is basically water coming through the levy, which could cause a breach of the levy and could compromise the structural stability of the levy. And then there were also trees that had to be removed in order to do the slope restoration of the levy.
So when we had an arborist go through and look at all the trees, did you also take those recommendations as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. And what was the total number of trees removed from the dike? Do you know offhand?
I can't tell you the number of trees that have been removed from the dike.
Anyone know?
We don't have a total number of the trees that have been removed.
Because I've heard some numbers thrown around and the numbers that are in my head right now was that we had 1,100 trees there at the start of this project and now we're down to 414. Does that sound about right?
I couldn't answer to that. I don't have an exact number of what's been removed.
Okay. But those trees that are gone now, so, and that would be, let's see, 700 maybe, those fit the qualifications that you just talked about when you were talking about the components. So those trees were either damaging or could potentially damage the levy or they were ill or I know that when I went on a tour of the dike road that they pointed out some trees that aren't even native to this area that they had to get rid of as well. So that's kind of the big category of all this?
And the ones that had to be removed in order to do the slope restoration?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And so when was that decision? I mean, as we're going through and we're looking at these trees and you're doing your job and I understand why you had to do it and why it was necessary, but at what point did we actually know that there was going to be this number of trees taken out?
Well, we had a certain number of trees that we knew were going to have to be taken out based on the health assessment and based on the engineering technical assessment that was done on them. But I think in the process of doing the slope restoration in construction, there are trees that you may not be able to identify beforehand until you start the construction. And once you begin that process, some trees had to be removed for that effort, the construction effort.
So if there was, if say at one point in time, it was kind of accepted that we have to take away some of the trees, but then say during the process over the last several weeks, your team would have identified further trees that perhaps needed to be taken out that weren't identified in the first round? Would that be a correct statement?
I would think that would be a correct statement, yes.
Okay. So during the process, then all of a sudden, we would find, you're out there and you say, "Oh my gosh, you know, we didn't spot this when we were first out here and now, or we are now that we're closer or we took out the tree's neighbor, we see that there's a problem underneath here." That kind of, that kind of thing?
True.
Yeah. Because I guess when you're dealing with organics, that could be a potential as opposed to dealing with something that's more structural?
There's certainly unknowns. And when you start construction, those unknowns come up.
Dan, could I have a question that would kind of play off of what you're talking about? When we talk about 1,100 trees that were inventoried, could you give us an idea of those trees? Because I've heard various stories of a tree is considered to be this big around all the way to this big around. So you could kind of give us an idea or a scope of, we're talking about 1,100 tree inventory. What does that consist of?
Well, the 1,100 trees that were inventoried were actually inventoried before the modeling was done for the seepage analysis. So they actually included, the 1,100 trees included some trees that were outside of what we call the zones of concern. So some of those trees were actually eliminated from the trees that we even identified for removal. I don't know if that answered your question.
So what I was getting at, I mean, were some of those trees, like if you drove down there, you see a lot of brush. What's considered brush? What is a tree? And I've heard that...
There were some trees that had maybe a two-inch diameter that were identified as a tree.
Okay.
So it may have looked like brush to just a citizen walking down the levy, but they were identified in this 1,100 as a tree.
And I just wanted to make that point, Dan, so we know where we were starting from.
Right. And we don't know, I mean, if the 11, and I don't know where the 1,100 figure came from, but I also know that there's trees that are kind of outside of where you were working at. of where you were working at. You were just working on the, the dike itself, right? The, the levy that goes from where the foot is on one side to the foot on the other side.
Actually, the, the zones of concern in some areas, depending on the modeling that came from the geotechnical analysis, can extend up to seventy-five feet on the inward side of the levy, the land side.
Wow.
So those trees were, modeling was done on them, and the trees that were identified that would pose a risk to the structural stability of the levy, there were trees that were identified that had to be removed.
Okay. Does part of your, your process, what you're doing for us, is, does that include an ongoing maintenance plan moving forward?
Yes.
And that, that's underway right now? I assume that's not ready?
Yes, that's correct.
But so we won't, we won't, I mean, the, basically, from what I hear from staff, the, the trees there and the vegetation, no one's really touched it forever. So moving forward, though, we're going to be doing more and more stuff to keep that under control and to manage it like anyone would?
Correct.
Okay.
There needs to be a yearly assessment of the trees on the levy as part of the certification process.
Okay. And this, this other question, Mr. Mayor, is probably, not to Ms. Winters specifically, but I know that the city had formed an ad hoc committee that was a dike road committee or a levy committee or something, and that committee was dissolved. I just want to know why it was dissolved when it was, because it seems a lot of the, a lot of this upset seems to deal with that there was citizens involved at some point, and then all of a sudden, they weren't. And I just wanted to see how that process went. And I guess Mr. Dobler's going to address that.
I don't think I can answer the why. My understanding was, with the, the chairman, John Bruning, in concert with the former city administrator, both agreed that it had fulfilled its mission and disbanded it, I guess. That's, that's what I know.
Yeah. It just seems like we, we might have had a little bit less upset if we had that committee still around. And, I mean, I know it's now water under the bridge, but it, it came as a surprise to me when I received an email, and I was like, whoa, this, this thing was dissolved back in April, and I didn't even know that it, it happened to be no more. Because I thought, I thought it was an ongoing, I would think that would be an ongoing thing until we actually got the maintenance plan done, but apparently, that wasn't the decision of the former administrator.
Yeah. I wasn't part of the process, so I can't address it directly, but I'm like you, that's what I was made aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kiki.
Just on this letter called the CLOMAR, when you send that letter in, it has all of the specifics that your firm has come up with as recommendations. Is that letter just accepted, or is there a process whereby FEMA says, that's not enough trees, or that's too many trees, or how does that work?
When I say it's a letter, it's actually-
A document.
Probably about a, a thousand to twelve-hundred-page document, which includes all of the technical analysis that we've performed. And this CLOMAR is identifying all of the, all of the, the technical conditions that it takes to certify a levy. And, and many of those are spelled out in the federal code forty-four sixty-five-ten. But you, you have to be able to certify that the levy meets many technical criteria in order to provide that certification. And the way this has evolved, since the Corps is no longer certifying the levies, is the certification has to come from a firm, a local firm. And once that certification is in place and FEMA accepts it, then they provide their accreditation of that levy. But yes, they, they review it, there is an iteration process. In fact, we're in our second iteration process of questions that they have of this twelve-hundred-page document, and we provide clarification, or sometimes we have to provide some additional modeling. And once they become comfortable with it, I don't, once they become comfortable with, with what we've submitted, then they provide that preliminary acceptance of the CLOMAR. Now, understand, the CLOMAR is a preliminary submittal. Then we have to actually perform the recommended improvements to the levy so that we can get accredited.
Laura, I, I had a question, you know, and we're, if you go back to the very beginning when the Army Corps said, okay, all the trees and all the vegetation had to go. And then, then we, there was some folks that came forward and with the city, worked with the Army Corps, and then it was determined that we were going to be able to keep some trees. We had, just in using rough numbers, a thousand trees that were inventoried. An arborist that was a contractor for Rune Jaeger, I understand, came out, and he assessed that, again in round numbers, three hundred and fifty of those trees had health issues. And those had to, had to go. So I think at, at that time, the feeling was, great, we've saved seven hundred trees. And that was a problem, because I think now we can see that, at that point, by saying that we, how we're going to have seven hundred trees remaining, we hadn't looked at the other two elements that caused tree removal. One was the geotechnical analysis, which was going to cause more trees to be removed, and the other one was the slope. So those two factors then came to the total number of trees that were removed. So the celebration that we had seven hundred trees that were going to remain, whether that was a miscommunication on the city's part, which it, everything points to, yes, that it was, we miscommunicated that, and we gave some people some false hope, that number was incorrect. So I guess I'm, I'm, just wanted to clarify that, from your opinion, we, we celebrated too soon? I mean, we spiked the ball before we got to the end zone.
It was a preliminary celebration.
Yeah.
And I, I think we were very excited at the time, the whole community was, that we weren't going to have to remove all the trees. I mean, that, that was certainly a, a positive response from the Corps, that they weren't going to require all of the trees to be removed. Because initially, anything greater than two inches in diameter, their, their stance was, it would have to be removed. So, but yes, I think the three hundred and fifty was a preliminary celebration, because we had not completed the geotechnical analysis.
Okay. And so are, do you, from, from your professional viewpoint, and you're the expert in, in this, and put the, the plan together, were there any trees removed from that that shouldn't have been?
Not to my knowledge.
So from your professional opinion, and you're the one that prepared the study to lead us to the dike recertification, there was not any tree that was removed that should have stayed?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Mayor, could I ask Gordon a few questions?
Yeah.
He was kind of our guy on the ground. I didn't want her to have to do it all, Gordon.
Yeah, I know.
So in two thousand eleven, way back when you did the first tour on the dike with all the tree guys, all the different committee members that were taking the first talk, the reason I know I watched the video, because I would videotape that while you were down there, and I listened to what you were saying in two thousand eleven, it seems like forever ago. But there was no third party yet, but you did mention the fact that that was another path. You were talking about a path of least resistance through the Army Corps at that time. You talked about certification as one thing, and then accreditation, I think is the word, as another. Can you fill that in so it's clearer to me?
Sure. So up until, I don't know, recently, I don't remember the date, but it was maybe twelve or thirteen, the Army Corps had certified the levy to the government. I don't even know if it was FEMA in pre-Katrina world, but they certified it. So there, there was, we weren't even talking to FEMA at that point. They were completely out of the picture. So in that eleven, twelve, thirteen, there was a transition where the Army Corps just backed out and said, FEMA Homeland Security is now driving the bus, they want all of the levies certified, and that meant something a little different than what the Army Corps had done. They called it accreditation. So that was FEMA's name for basically the same thing.
So two different things.
No, it's the same thing. They're basically saying, the levy will do what it's supposed to do. Army Corps did it up until then, and then FEMA, like I said, then they took over and said, well, we don't do certification or accreditation, now you have to hire a consultant to do it. So that's what kicked in. But it's the same process, the same, well, a little different process, but the same intent to say, in the end, someone is saying the levy will do what it was designed to do. It's still, the integrity is still intact, you know, all of the issues are good to go.
And didn't we, it seems to me, it was crazy at the time, still seems crazy, all the options that you were trying to come up with to-
Yeah.
-keep it or accredit it or whatever. I remember you talked about a wall.
Right.
Literally, a wall around the beach.
Yeah, that was right. When we were dealing specifically with the Army Corps before FEMA took over, there was no negotiating with them. We were going to, and we were going to try to figure out how to do it, but back then, it was one word, you got to remove the trees. Well, there was, in their rules, there was an option to say, if we were to put a, a cutoff wall in the middle of the levy, then the levy becomes immaterial. So we don't need to certify the levy, you're going to put a cutoff wall. That's the wall we'd looked at to say, well, it, it makes the, the levy superfluous, but it was a million, two million, three million dollar fix to do that, so.
I just seem to remember us going down some different paths and always coming out, shaking our heads, going, this isn't making any sense.
Yeah. So it was a windfall when the Army Corps stepped back, and we, now, we had to follow FEMA's recommendations, which were, for the most part, not near as restrictive as Army Corps.
Okay. Thanks.
Kiki. My follow-up, Gordon, while you're still here, was, was to this letter issue, if we've gone through this many iterations of this letter, are we in jeopardy now of doing something that would cause us to have to go back to square one and remove more trees? Are, are we at a process in it now where what we're doing is going to satisfy the accreditation once we've gotten that done? And it isn't going to come back and say, no, that's not enough trees, take more out?
I suppose that's possible, yes. We, we don't think that that will happen, but it's possible. And I would take a moment to pause and say, remember that outside of the very top of the levy, the pavement, if you will, is all private property. Some of it's not even in the city. So the, the property owner has every right to do whatever they want with those trees. Very good. They can come and cut them all down tomorrow, and we could, in essence, do nothing. Well, I'm not saying they would do that. It's NIC. I don't think they have it in their mind. But I have to make a point that, at some point, if they go out and look at a tree and say it's endangering the building, or we just don't like it, or we want to put something here and the tree's in the way, they can take it. And that could happen outside of our approval process. So there's always that possibility.
But I don't think that would affect the accreditation of the levy.
I don't think it would affect the accreditation. Certainly, removing trees only reduces the risk, if you will, incrementally. So I, I doubt FEMA would oppose removal. Your original question was, do you think that they might require us to remove more? No, because for the most part, they're following the consultant's recommendations. They're just taking what these guys said, making sure they filled in the blanks and that it is complete, and then take it off theoretically.
Thank you.
Ron?
Yeah. Gordon, two, two things. What isn't city property down there?
We don't have property. We have right-of-way that was dedicated on the very top of the levy, and then we have a maintenance easement that goes down to the toe on either side, but it's just a maintenance easement.
Okay. And now the, uh, city street department are the ones that have been doing the work down there, correct?
Correct.
And say, if, if they weren't doing it and somebody else was doing it, are we saving a lot of money?
Well, yeah, that's a great question, because we did hire initially a contractor to do stump removal. They worked for one week, and we spent about thirteen thousand dollars. Street department, they're cheap, a cup of coffee, a few dinners, we're good to go. So that gives you order of magnitude. And our parks department also, I don't want to leave them out, they came in and did a ton of limbing, that's same order of magnitude. So we're probably saving, and I'm just guessing, but on the order of a hundred thousand dollars by having our street department do the work.
Okay, now, city's paying, say, would be paying part of it?
Yes.
And, and NIC pay the other, the other part?
Yes. They're actually considering that amendment to their original contract tonight or tomorrow night, but every indication is they're okay with that. So yes, they are partnering with us.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar, which contains several items, including Resolution fifteen zero zero six, an agreement for the Spokane River stewardship partners, funding, and cost sharing.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Renata, do you need to read any, did you list, you got them all? List all the resolutions, okay? Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements, any announcements from the council? Amy?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple announcements from the Arts Commission. I want to let the community know that our new piece, The Explorers, has been installed in McEwen, and it's an interactive bronze, so the children can go and crawl all over it and enjoy it in this nice warm weather. Also, the popular piece, the Allium Coris, is the piece that looks like a large dandelion, is shedding some of its flowers, so to speak. So they, the artist is kindly sending a new head, so one of the heads of that piece will be replaced soon. And we also have a few vacancies on the Arts Commission, so if anybody out there in the community is interested, they can apply through our city's website.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? Kiki?
Just quick from the library, as I've been talking about this joint project we're working on, we will be having a brief update presentation at next council meeting, if it gets approved on the agenda. And there's just some exciting progress there, so we'll be able to hear what's been going on.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Dan?
Thank you. I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm, I'm very appreciative that Iron Man is going to be here, and I just wanted to say a few words, I've said these before, but if you have a room that you rent out or a home or something, do consider helping out the chamber, because they are doing a lot to bring Iron Man here. And I think if you're making a little money renting out a room or your house or something like that, you can help everyone out by contributing to the chamber. The other thing is regarding the levy trees, I'm, I'm just like you, Mr. Mayor, I'm very sad that the way it's happened, and I think we could have done a far better job communicating. You know, even, even here, I've been, I, I walk down there a lot, because I live down there, but I didn't go down there because it was roped off. And I had no idea what was going on, it was just, we can do a better job communicating. But I do think, in the future, moving forward, I would like to consider, you know, redoing that road. I think the, the road's kind of terrible, and I know that it was talked about several times to improve it somehow, to improve the parking on the road so that it's not eroding on the sides, also to add some ADA access to the water, improve the way that you can get down to the beach and stuff. So I think, you know, moving forward, it's probably going to turn out to be really nice. It was just that initial shock of, of having all those trees gone, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I have an appointment of Virginia Tate to the Parks and Recreation Committee, so I'd like to-
Move.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. General Services, we have a staff report by Police Chief White, approval of grant application for acceptance of partial funding of one police officer through the Idaho Office of Highway Safety.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Over the past few months, we've been discussing staffing concerns with the police department and trying to find fiscally responsible ways of adding police officers. And tonight, I come before you with a request to add one officer through a grant opportunity. This grant is for partial funding of one officer to be assigned to traffic-related duties and is a pass-through grant from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to the Idaho- Highway Traffic Safety Administration to the Idaho Office of Highway Safety. Our proposal is to increase the overall staffing in our traffic unit from three to four, and hire a new officer to fill the resulting patrol vacancy. Did not know this presentation was going to do this. By way of background, last year, the Police Department handled over 42,000 calls for service, and a large number of those calls were traffic-related. Stats from the state indicate that in 2013, we were the highest, I'm sorry, the fourth-highest in the city and the state for injury crashes, and the third-highest for impaired driving-related crashes. When you factor in the traffic concerns with the volume of other calls for service that the average patrol officer takes, we have very little time left over for traffic enforcement. And successful traffic programs are really based on three things: education, engineering, and enforcement. The goal of this program would be to focus on the education and enforcement aspect of traffic safety. If approved, the additional traffic officer would be assigned to reduce the total number of injury crashes in our city, impact impaired driving, assist in educational efforts geared towards safe driving, and keep our school zones safe. In general terms, this grant will fund 75% of the officer's salary, I'm sorry, the traffic officer's wages, benefits, and equipment for the first year, 50% the second year, and 25% the third year. Additional savings will also be realized, because while this grant funds a percentage of the officer's wages and benefits that will be going to the traffic unit, we will be hiring a new officer at the lower range to fill his place on patrol, or his place on patrol. And in summary, this is, in our opinion, a fiscally responsible way of adding one police officer, which will make our city safer. And I'm hoping to get your approval to apply for and accept this grant.
Okay. Questions for Chief White? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, congratulations on this grant. This is awesome. We need more cops.
Sir, I didn't do the work, actually. It was Captain Childers, and Sergeant Terrell, and the members of the care unit that put this thing together. They did all the research and found the grant. I'm just the person up here talking about it.
Thank you, gentlemen. And so, we need more, we need more cops. Do we need another car for this, too?
Yes, sir. Here's, the way the program works is, we're required to do a 25% match the first year, for instance. That can be, as far as the officer's salary, it could also be in equipment. Part of the grant that we're submitting for is the 75% of the officer's wages and benefits. In addition to that, some overtime for doing some school zone enforcement, some DUI enforcement, and also some equipment. Now, we can't do the car on the grant, because the grant limitations do not allow that, but it can be part of the city's match. The total dollar amount, we're still discussing with the state to figure out exactly what it will be, but we think it will be in the neighborhood of about $110,000 that we're submitting for, for the first year.
Very good, thank you.
Woody? Chief, I got to ask, when you broke it down into three categories, education, is that like a warning ticket?
You know, that can be a piece of it. Really, what we're talking about there is more of the public service announcements. When we go on Facebook, and we caution people about winter driving habits, you know, a couple months ago. When we talk about school zone enforcement, just when school is getting started, that sort of thing. We talk about pedestrian safety, and bicycle safety, and things of that nature. Really, anything that we can do to get the word out to the motoring public, that if you're cautious and you obey the rules of the road, then chances of you being involved in a serious collision are reduced greatly. Wear your seatbelt, just things like that. That's a large part of the education component. The enforcement, I'm sorry, back to your question, yeah, some of that is when we make a traffic stop, and we tell the person, "Hey, stop texting and driving," rather than issuing a citation that time. Or, you know, "Here's the implications of you driving seven miles an hour over the speed limit," rather than issuing a citation. That absolutely goes to the part of the education component. The enforcement, obviously, is us doing, running radar when we're doing DUI enforcement, things of that nature. The third piece of the puzzle, really, is the engineering. I will tell you that we're working with, as a matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow with the engineers that run the lights along Highway 95, so we can discuss trying to reduce the mid-block collisions, and I hate to say mid-block, because it's a highway, but you know what I mean, between the traffic light collisions that we're seeing there as a result of potentially an engineering flaw, things of that nature. It's really, it's a three-pronged approach that we have to take. Adding this officer will take care of two of those four, so at least it'll help us in that arena. And the traffic safety part, I'm sorry, the engineering part is something that we work on with our folks internally, and then also with the state along Highway 95.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chief. Looking for a motion to approve this?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the grant application for acceptance of partial funding of one police officer through the Idaho Office of Highway Safety.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Other business, we have a McEwen Park reconciliation summary presented by Steve Anthony, and I just wanted to take a minute and thank councilperson Miller, who has worked very, very hard on this project, and I think it's very important that we get all the numbers out, and it's reconciled properly. And I've just worked with staff, and I've worked with Steve, and several others, and so I just want to thank you, Kiki, for all the time and effort that you've spent on that. So Steve, take it away.
Mayor, councilors, this project is going to be a kind of a dialogue between Kiki and I, going back and forth, Councilor Miller. And I'm going to start out that, basically, we're going to go through a process that's been several meetings, working with different groups, and at times, I'm going to ask Councilor Miller to please, please add if I've left anything out on that. But this started with the McEwen Field Steering Committee back in 2010, but actually, before that, you had what was called the Committee of Nine, that started in 2002. So McEwen was a big project over the years, and what we've done with this is, the philosophy of the Steering Committee was dream big, as John Barlow said at the first meetings, and kind of build down to fit the budget. So when I go through this, there's some numbers that might look big, but we feel comfortable that we've met the budget on that. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I wanted to, first off, just say, we, I need to thank Steve for doing this. Steve jumped in in the middle of this year-long process that I got involved with, because I felt it was really important, as a newly-elected person, dealing with a community project, that I wanted to assure that we weren't going to have to come back to the community and say there was some issue that we uncovered, and it was very important to go through this with a fine-tooth comb. Steve jumped in midway, so did Mr. Hammond, and so I've been trying to pull all the pieces together, and that's why Steve said, "Let's work on this together so that we get all the questions answered in one fell swoop tonight." So thanks for jumping in there and pitching Steve.
So here's the members of the McEwen Field Steering Committee. It was a big cross-section of our community. They had several meetings, some of them started at the very beginning, some came in during the middle of the project, some at the end of the project, but we felt very comfortable that we had a good cross-section and got several ideas across. But a big thank you to all these people, many, many, many morning meetings, and then many workshops, also with the city council, if you remember, in the mornings, to go through these plans.
And some of them are here tonight. I recognize some faces, so thanks for that.
So our goal when we were meeting on this was, we had multiple meetings then, too, once the project, and I'm not going to say completed, because it's a work in progress, but we had several meetings also to make sure that Team McEwen and our contractors had lived up to what we had paid for in the contract. So we've been spending multiple meetings with staff, multiple meetings with our consultants on it, and we feel comfortable, after meeting with them, that in the original McEwen plan, that the contractual work has all been completed. But we know there are other issues that we are going to have to work on. So we do have a $15,000 retain each to address some of those issues. We have, the Steering Committee has provided a punch list that has dozens of items that need to be completed. Some of those are contractual, some of those are warranty work that we'll be able to work on. Once the park is full swing, we can get the irrigation systems back on, we see what plantings we lost during the winter, different items with that. And then also, this is where my dream big and work down, we have a future wish list, which we're working on all the time. So McEwen was not just McEwen Park. It was actually five separate projects, starting in 2012 to 2014. So I think that's been some of the confusion on it, that when you think of McEwen, you think McEwen. But it was actually the McEwen Park itself, what we consider the green space out there, the playgrounds, the parking structure, which needed to be completed to augment the park, Front Avenue, Third Street improvements, that were, we thought this was a great time to do them with the development of the park, City Hall Parking Lot, the parking lot in front of this building here, and to the south of us, and then the Front Avenue Centennial Trail Project, the rerouting of the Centennial Trail. So we'll go through all these five separate projects in separate phases, and then be able to answer some questions afterwards. And also, do you remember, the main mission of McEwen with that Steering Committee was to reclaim the green space, which was our old Third and Fourth Street Parking Lot. We'd heard that loud and clear over the years, that the parking lot had to be rebuilt or something done, and the mission that came out of that was to reclaim that for green space. So this is your cost. The McEwen Park and amenities was $9,200,000. The parking structure was $7,440,000. Front Avenue, Third Street, $2,240,000. City Hall Parking Lot, $1,200,000, and Front Avenue Centennial Trail, $1,040,000. So the total cost of all the McEwen five projects was $21,120,000. We've heard a lot of times saying that's what was spent on the park. That's what the park actually was, the $9,200,000 cost figure there. And that included all the engineering and design fees.
And I'll just add that, in the course of the last year of going through all this, these numbers became very important to me, in that when you have a park that is of the caliber and quality of McEwen Park, and the actual price tag for that park is under $10 million, I think other municipalities would just scratch their head at, "How the heck did we pull that off for a park like that?" The other thing I think that was important is that that Third, that Front Street project, that was going to happen anyway, and it was going to be something that had been slated, it was part of, part of the growth in the downtown area. So to do it concurrently with this project, it made sense that that was why that decision was made. The City Hall Parking Lot project was during the course of the visioning with the community to add that boat-trailer expanded project, and one of the side benefits of that is that it's free. We have RV parking that's within walking distance of our Crown Jewel Lake and this beautiful park, and that's another benefit that I think, you know, I overlooked that as something that's really unique when I started looking at what other cities have in a park like that. And the opportunity to create the connectivity that we all talked about through all our Trails Foundations, with the Centennial Trail running right through there, being done at that time with a partner, is, it was something that, the timing was just right to have that happen. And I think it was important for me to set to rest, in my mind, the actual numbers of what did that park cost, and what did the rest of it cost. So I appreciated the due diligence Troy went through, to make sure that those numbers were right.
So as I said before, it was five separate projects, I broke down before you. We have met our engineering department, the project directors, staff from finance, staff from Parks Department, have met with Team McEwen several times, and went through the items that were in the contract, and we do feel that the contractual obligations have been met by Team McEwen, Welch Comer and that group, and then Contractors Northwest, who was our contractor out there. We have met also with Contractors Northwest, and we know there are some warranty items that we are working on, some irrigation items, some other items, but we have identified those, walking with the consultants, and been assured those will be taken care of this spring, once we have a chance, I said earlier. And then we have items in the original vision plan, but not completed due to budget. We've identified some of those, and we have actually accomplished a few of them with the nice weather this week, if you've seen the crew out there working, and I can discuss those a little bit later. And then we had the wish list, which we're working with the foundation. We hopefully, they get the funds, and through donations, it will be able to do those other amenities. So McEwen was $9,200,000, and that, as I said earlier, was the playground area, the plaza, the green space, the splash pad, restrooms, all the amenities that were in the original park. I think if you remember, that the conception, we had a soft opening last month. We promised the public we would have the park open on a certain date. We had the soft opening last spring, and from there, we knew the park wasn't a complete dud. We knew there were things we've had to do, and we've been doing them. But our goal the whole time has been to stay under. Our budget was $9,200,000, and that's where we've stayed at, is at the budget level we were given to work with by the council. The McEwen Parking Structure, that had to be turned, one of the goals in the original Steering Committee was to not lose parking spots in the downtown core, to actually increase parking. The only way that could be accomplished was the parking structure on that, and as Kiki said earlier, some things drove the cost up of that. Number one was, the council voted to keep the boat ramp at Third Street, which made some design changes in the plan, and increased a little bit of the cost for the parking garage. And then also, it was the state determined that to be a bridge, not a road. And then, once they got all their, the contracts and turned it into the state, it had to be reinforced a little bit heavier as a bridge. So the total cost of the parking structure was $7,440,000. That's not good. So the next was the City Hall Parking Lot, that was $1,200,000. That was to replace some of the parking also lost on Third and Fourth Street, to accommodate boat trailers, and to accommodate RVs, to give overflow parking for events here at City Hall of the library. Also, to parking, it's the main parking for this into the park, and it's free parking for the public. But during the construction of Front Street and McEwen Park, the people needed, needed to be able to park somewhere in the town, so that was $1,200,000 to complete this parking out here, and using the property that used to be south of the City Hall to develop that park. Front Avenue Centennial Trail, Front Avenue, Centennial Trail Project, that was $1,040,000. That was donations and an LID. Main goal of that was to get the Centennial Trail off of Front Street, get it down through the park, and then eventually, it'll come back up Eighth Street and connect on Mullen. And that was part of just the reconstruction of Front, and through donations and an LID. Okay, Front Street, that was done 2013, Front Street and Third Street improvements. That project had been on the books for several years to do, and the timing was right when McEwen Field was bid out, that Front Street improvements came in, the merchants were assessed an LID, and then it was decided to actually expand, to go up the alleys on Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, to make those improvements there. So that was $2,240,000, and that was basically to improve the Front Street for years. The city had looked at things to do. If you remember, the old railroad tracks going down Front Street, they'd just been patched, so that project came in at the same time as doing the park. So again, that's how we got our $21,120,000 figure. And as any other parks, if you look back at our City Park, if we've looked at since that was given to the city by Blackwell in the 1900s, we probably have more than a $9 million investment in that park, but it's been done over a period of a lot of years. McEwen was done over a period of two to three years. So if you look at our investment in our parks, the city's always been proud of those. I use Ramsey Park as a good example, too. Ramsey was done in three phases, and it had Ramsey One, the first one, then we had the Meadowfields Ramsey Two and Three, then Ramsey Four and Five. Again, a park is always a work in progress. We've identified from the users, a lot of when the users are out there, staff is talking to them, they get their own wear patterns. So we know that there are items that need to be finished, and we are working on those. We've been questioning the Osprey cameras, if you've seen, the crew was out there working today. We're putting signs in for wayfinding, bike racks, different things, but we're trying to do a lot of those in-house. to do a lot of those in-house. And then also, we're hoping the foundation, their donor wall comes through, the Panhandle Parks Foundation, so they can help us with some of the projects also out there.
Any questions for Steve?
Oh, I got one last slide. Oop, goddammit.
Oh yeah, I've seen that one.
That's enough. And this is just the activities that are slated. You know, Amy, last year you mentioned during the budget meeting that we were going to be slammed, you know, once McEwen is found out there. And if you see, these are just tentative. A lot of them have already booked for McEwen. And if you were here last weekend or Friday, Saturday, we had staff count, there wasn't any time from Friday at 10 o'clock till Friday at 4:00, there was less than 225 kids on that playground out there. So it's, we've gotten the public downtown, public to use the park, and we feel very, very confident that our goals have been met.
Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anthony, so you had all your costs up there, you didn't include the cost of moving Legion Ball Field up to Ramsey Park?
No. And a lot of that, if you'd like to, I could just ballpark that, Dan.
Literally, yes.
But that was done mainly in-house, so I believe we probably did that for under two hundred thousand dollars.
Excellent. Also, you were missing some funding figures, so do you have a summary of where the funding came from?
I don't have that.
Okay. And this is just a random question popped in my head last time I was in there. I thought of this. Are the elevators working?
The elevators?
Yeah.
Last time I was in there, the one was working on Fifth Street.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ron.
Wish list.
Wish list.
What's on the wish list?
There's several things, and one of them, we talked at the Arts Commission today of putting historical signs on our utility boxes there, more benches through the park, maybe some added lighting, some everything that works, activities on the grass area down there. And so basically, the wish list, you know, I don't have everything off the top of the head, but the Osprey cameras was a wish list, and that's being done through donations. We still need to finish the sun dial, but that will be done, so that's off the wish list on that. So, Ron, I think it's just basic, we've heard that people want more benches along Tubbs Hill Trail, and so we will do those, and some of those.
And maybe I can jump in on that one, too, a little bit. One of the processes that we took through this last year is, there were items in a contract as you finish the job that are punch list items. They were contractual obligations and they needed to be done. And we took that punch list set of items and went through it meticulously to assure that part was done. But there were a long list of items that this group of citizens had put together from the vision process through this that did not ever make it to the contractual portion of this project. They were not part of the contract. The important thing in this last year is that we were able to identify what those were, be able to add to the list as folks started using the park, requests that could be done. And I think you called it the wear patterns of the park. That's an ongoing process with any park, that once people start using it, you find that the benches that you had engineered in one place really made more sense somewhere else. So that entire list was put together. It's a work in process, but the important part is the punch list contractual obligations were met. The wish list items are not being forgotten. They're being attended to as the funding comes in from the foundations and the other sources to pay for them. And I think that, I will mention that the original steering committee has interest in creating a Friends of the Park group. There was some conversation about that, so I hope that that comes to fruition, and they will be the folks that will be working with Steve and the city to make sure that that wish list gets addressed one way or another as we move on. Was that a really long answer to a short question?
Yeah, I guess wish list is the right answer. It's just things that you argument the park as it goes, it's improvements over time when we see what's needed down there at the park, whether it's, you know, more picnic benches, different areas, just items from, as Kiki said.
And some great ideas that were brought up, that were art pieces and artwork and things that can be dealt with to enhance the beauty of the seawall and the plaza as the park matures.
And I guess one other good one, Ron, is we've had some physicians that want to maybe donate some sun shades on the playground, because there's so much sun in the summer, to help shade the kids. So just things like that, you know, that the community that weren't in the original plan, but people have stepped up to help with that.
Okay, another thing, too. Coming this way from the Harbor House and south of the Veterans area, you've got that big open space. Have you looked at any, doing anything there? I've had some people mention to me that that would be maybe a good area, that maybe flag football, soccer, something of that nature.
Yeah. And in our Recreation Division, we are going to have our mini kickers program down there this year, and so we're doing, looking at other activities to do in the green space, and those will just be activities that we'll do through our Recreation Department, some skyhawk camps and things like that.
Okay, one other question. Is there going to be any more money, taxpayer money, spent on the McEwen?
Will there be? That will be up to the council when we present our budget on that, so. But yes, they'll be like any park.
I hope there's maintenance monies that will come into it.
And we hopefully, council, we have a big investment in that park. So yes, the staff, we're going to be coming for you as any other department and ask for a general fund allocation to maintain that. It's, we have it now, we'll maintain it, but as far as asking for huge dollars, but there will be general maintenance items that we'll put in, we'll actually have probably some capital items, and that'll be the council's decision on how much you want to fund it to that point.
Thank you.
Woody.
Well, this has been real interesting to look at it this way, finally, after it's passed us and we can kind of look back. And thanks, Kike, for jumping on that. So after we see all this, and you guys have obviously gone through every little niche and cranny, what lessons have we learned? And are we going to have something to help carry these types of projects in the future that make it better, make it easier? Or is that even possible?
Well, actually, yes, and it was kind of the closing item I had. And what I wanted to ensure the community and the rest of the council is that, a few things. One is that we did go through the process of closing the park and making, closing the contract and making sure that we didn't release money until we had gotten the work we paid for. And I believe that happened. And the other is that we wanted to ensure that warranty items and ongoing work that had to be done seasonally or however was going to take place. One of the things that I walked away from this is something I'm going to recommend right now, and that's that I'd like to bring forward a motion that council request staff to draft a policy or procedure so that when the city is faced with a scope of work that is unique in its features to what the city does, that it's of a scope and size, either financially or geographically or whatever those parameters end up being, that there be either an owner's representative or a third-party project manager considered to manage that project as part of the proposal to council as moving forward.
Second.
I'll leave it at that, and we'll open it up for discussion. I feel strongly that we could keep that budget neutral, and we could save some money under that kind of a premise, and I'd like to have it explored.
So, Kike, if you could repeat your motion.
The whole thing?
Well, no, just abbreviated.
Thank you. I would like to bring forward a motion that council direct staff to draft a policy whereby a third-party owner's representative or project manager be part of a presentation on any large-scale contractual work that is unique in its nature and/or a financial scope that's larger than what we would normally address.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion, further discussion on that?
I'd like to ask questions. Mr. Hammond, will this save us some money if we do this, or will this actually cost us money?
Councilman Gookin and members of the council. In previous experience, both at my level and previous positions, as well as on a state board that I serve on, we hire project managers and we always save more than the cost of that project manager because they are, we hire people who are experts in whatever the project is, and they represent the owner and assure that we get the best project in a timely manner and for the least cost.
Excellent.
Woody?
So, Kike, would this apply to, let's say, Government Way coming up on the north end of town?
Well, Gordon left, so he'd be the one to answer that question. In my opinion, this would, is what part of the motion would be about, is that if Mr. Hammond directs staff to come together and say, the widening of Government Way is a project that's a size and scope that's quite typical to things we've done before. It doesn't have aspects to it that are unique, require a huge amount of public input and/or variations to a normal public works contract. So I would say that that answer to that would be that I would take staff's recommendation on that one, but it probably wouldn't require a third party because it's a typical type of public works contract.
So would it apply to wastewater treatment expansions? Or do we do that already?
We do that already, is what I think we're at.
We typically have a project manager for that type of project. They're so specialized that you want to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's carried. Steve, I had a couple more questions. You ran off here for you. Oh, I am just assuming that your office, you will be the lead on working with CNI on the warranty work and the punch list.
Yes.
Just to clarify that.
Yeah, we've met with Dell Hatch, Team McEwen, and walked the site, and then with Brian from Contractors Northwest.
Okay. And then I, as well, would really like to see with Ron. Ron and I will be down there in our chairs to watch some youth soccer or some youth football down in that green space. Would really love to see some activity on that, so we look forward to that happening. And then I want to just make sure, we have some people that have been very involved on the steering committee and are very passionate about that park, and I want to make sure that we communicate with them, with Sandy, with Gary, with Tina, the people that really are passionate about the park, and everyone, that we're in close contact with them to know what's going on with that.
And council member Miller, I know, spent several times meeting with him and talking to him and trying to address the concerns, and then Kiki and I have gotten together and discussed those issues. And so I've been trying to, too, when anything happens to maybe if a council member sends me an email and they have a certain item that they're looking on, I say, okay, they have an interest in that, and every email I get regarding that issue, I forward on to that council member. And so as the council, if there's a certain issue, like when you want to know, when is this going to be done or where are we at? If you want to send me an email, I can put you on the loop. I haven't sent them to every council member because some of them are items specific to a donation that they've been asked by one of the constituents, and so I figure, okay, I'll keep them involved up to that point. And so that's how we've tried to work with the people and the committee members. Some of them have, it was such a large committee, some of them have different interests in every area. You know, some of them are interested in one section of the park, some because of such a good cross-section of the community involved.
And we're all looking forward to Sandy Emerson having the Friends of McEwen.
Yeah. I think that's good.
Tell us when that's going to happen.
Is that an appointment?
That sounds like it. We'll have to talk about that further. And can I say, too, the recommendation for this third-party oversight in no way reflects anything that our local contractors and Team McEwen did that was negligent or wrong. I believe that just having that oversight would help us be even better. So I really learned that through this process, and I appreciate you guys' support.
And thank you so much for all your work on this. You really, really, I mean, people have no idea how many hours you spent looking over numbers and going to meetings.
No, they don't.
You really did a good job.
All right, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
So now is the time for a public comment. If someone wishes to address the mayor or council, they have three minutes to address the council, so come on up.
Eighteen B Street here in Coeur d'Alene. And I have, can you hear me? Okay, I have one.
Microphone's over here.
Okay, okay, there it is. I have one more concern about the Dyke Road. It's so bare, that's the big shock, and it's done, but when I went down the last time, they were talking about the limbing of the trees, and they're just way up high, and, you know, have you ever, have you ever taken shelter under a tree in a rainstorm? It's just neat, and people do, and I've had people say this to me, the first tree that you go in on the west side, it's just been all limbed up, there's no shelter, there's no shade, there's no anything. And going in on the, everybody drive there tomorrow and see how stark that looks with everything 20 feet up in the air. And I think that there was still this weekend, a lot that hasn't been trimmed up, and maybe it doesn't have to be trimmed up as severely, and it can look more natural and more Coeur d'Alene-ish. Something to think about. And I guess that's all for now.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I came tonight to...
When you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Bev Moss. I live in Coeur d'Alene. I came tonight, I had a long statement about my disappointment about the number of trees that were cut down and my disillusionment over the process or the communication that happened about that. And I came to ask for answers. Well, I'm glad I came because I got a lot of answers, and they weren't exactly what I wanted to hear, but it did help to know how those decisions were made. I really appreciated the apology from the city about the lack of communication. And I guess my plea to you as a city council would be that you make these facts known much further than just here, and that apology also goes further. I think that would go a long way. I came pretty agitated, and I'm leaving somewhat calmer. So I think that could happen on a broader scale if we just kind of share this information further. So thank you for trying to get to the bottom of it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, I want to thank you for allowing me to come tonight. Earlier, there was a scientific presentation on the Dyke. I'm giving a personal one.
Excuse me, can we get your name, please?
Yes, Sarah Ferris, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. I'm coming here tonight because two people I loved and cared deeply about are very much a part of Rosenberry Drive, my late grandfather, Walter Rosenberry, it's namesake, and my grandmother, Sarah Etta Rosenberry. It has always been an honor to know that a beautiful and scenic stretch of land right behind the college is named after my maternal grandfather. He died in 1941, 10 years before I was born. And that stretch of land in this beautiful city is my link to him. It is sacred ground, and I guess you could say to me and other members of the Rosenberry family, it's so much a part of our personal history. We are a lumber family, at least on my mother's side, and most of my grandparents, six children who were raised on Sherman, worked in the industry. The only exception being my mother, who is the only girl, but we used to refer to her as Mary Jean, the Timber Queen. So she, her heart was always in timber as well. Rosenberry Drive was dedicated to my grandfather after he passed away by his dear friend and mayor of Coeur d'Alene, Oscar Foxy Edmonds. Those of us who are his descendants and grandchildren care deeply about his memory and all he did for Coeur d'Alene. He asked the Winton family, whom he worked with, to donate the land to the city that is now North Idaho College. He was a visionary and a dedicated person, committed to preserving and protecting the land he loved in this beautiful lake city where he lived from 1918 to 1941. I would simply ask that henceforward, as many trees as possible can be preserved on that beautiful drive. I appreciated the presentation. I, too, feel a little more relieved and have a clearer picture of what's going on. The vistas on that stretch of land are incredibly beautiful, but it's the trees that capture the essence of who my grandfather was. He didn't just consider the lumber business work, it was his calling. He started out as a, what they call a common labor, worked his way up in mills in Rose Lake, in St. Paul, Minnesota, and eventually running Winton lumber here in Coeur d'Alene. If he were alive today, I am convinced that he would be dedicated to preserving and protecting, and yes, replanting our forests and roadways. The timber industry helped build our country, and he would understand that we have an obligation morally to protect this great resource, our trees. I would therefore ask and implore that if... I would therefore ask and implore that if there is any chance we can plant new trees along Rosenberry Drive someday, that that too can be done. My grandfather was always thinking about future generations and protecting our natural beauty and the surroundings that our grandchildren will be around to enjoy. As one of his grandchildren, I'd like to carry on that tradition that he started, so that all our citizens now and in the future can enjoy Rosenberry Drive and its most beautiful. Thank you.
Why, just, just a second. I, well, I just wanted to. I just wanted to say that one, one advantage of, of the city being able to do the work, as you had heard, there, there was a savings of a hundred thousand dollars. So, there is some funding, i- if the council wishes to do that so, of making some enhancements to that area, and we're certainly going to look at Steve Anthony and Bill Greenwood and, and other city staff to possibly bring forward some things that we could possibly do down there to enhance it.
Well, that would be wonderful.
And so, that's one of the good things that come out of the, of the city doing the work. So, I just wanted to assure you that we're gonna take a look at that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Make sure you start the clock.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Sandy Emerson. I have a office in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, America, and I, but I live at, uh, 2929 East Lookout Drive, which is just between Dalton Gardens and City of Hayden and the county. But I'm pretty much dedicated to downtown Coeur d'Alene, because I've been here a while, and I used to have something to do with the Chamber of Commerce and spent, I guess I grew up here. And my home at one time was Mullen Park, which is McEwen Field. The reason I'm here right now, and for two reasons, so I figure I can back up and come back, get another three minutes, two things, and I'll do that. But one is the dike road. I was by default, I think, placed on the, uh, dike road committee, because I'd been active in the, uh, some other things, and ended up on that committee. I observe a couple things. I think, as others have stated, that the, uh, city's position of saying there was miscommunication is, is appropriate. I think there was, um, some pretty dedicated effort to go into doing what folks thought were gonna preserve the trees, and when that changed, there, it seemed to be kind of a slap in the face to a lot of people, including residents and people on the committee. There are reasons for that, and you've done a pretty good job of explaining that. I know for a fact that when engineers, I was an army engineer, uh, worked with the Corps of Engineers in some cases, and they would do whatever it took to comply. You know, money was no object. I know for a fact that at Hayden Lake, when the dike there was identified as a situation that needed attention, the, um, highway district showed up with pickups and chainsaws. They were only stopped by actually, believe it or not, the DEQ, from cutting all the trees, because that was the dictate. And the major general of the Corps of Engineers actually was called in from Seattle, came in and said, "It was a flood stage, there's as much water on one side as there is in the other. What's the point?" So, it's kind of an interesting level of thinking, and I really applaud the city for reining it in and doing what they could. I think a couple things need to be done. One, I agree, uh, with the Rosenberry connection, that, uh, trees might be, native plants could be put in there, different kinds of vegetation. I think we ought to go back in there and look more carefully at, uh, things like some benches, some amenities. I know it's been done, uh, to some degree, but this would be a really good opportunity to look at a better parking plan along there, maybe a little retaining wall kind of effort, I'm not sure, but pads that get people to the, both sides. You know, it's just time to rethink how that's been treated and what's there. And I also think, and this could be a little bit different, but we, uh, I was chairman of the, uh, county waterway, Parks and Waterways Commission for quite a while. We went with the mayor, or the sheriff, Rocky Watson, about putting in some docks down there that might be work for, uh, security as well as, um, um, public use. And a T dock off that, uh, existing seawall down there would be a, uh, consideration, I think ought to be done, that people off the lake, lots of people are on the lake, come to the college for events and do other things, might be a good thing. So, plantings, native plants, some amenities on that seawall. What a wonderful resource. How many places have a college with that kind of campus and the foregrounds? I think we're doing a good job there. My time is up on that one. Do you want me to step away and talk about McEwen Park?
You, you can go ahead and start right now.
I'll, I'll be brief. The, um, and yes, I am a friend of McEwen Park. Thank you very much for acknowledging that. I, my office overlooks it. I, I think I moved the project up maybe, uh, some years, because I observed that we'd had 30 years of planning, and we hadn't done anything, and I was looking out my office window at a broken up parking lot for much too long, and my grandkids, not my kids, they'd grown and were moving away. But I wanted my grandkids to have a park plan, and so they, because of my observations, I got to be on the steering committee. So, I'm not sure if that was punishment or reward. I think that there's a couple things that are, I really want to thank everybody. This has been a amazing effort. It's a great park. It's not even a year old, so if, it seems like there are frustrations over it, there's a lot of things that are gonna happen. Um, it's taken a long time for some of them, the, um, sundial overlook is gonna be really an interesting iconic image down there, and we're only a week or two away from that. Thank you so much. Um, I get, and the, this spring, we're gonna see some plantings that we didn't see before, uh, so that'll be a whole new look. The signage needs to be done, and I think it's underway, and I think Steve, Bill Greenwood and people like that are doing a good job pulling that together, but we don't have any of the, uh, a lot of the things we talked about, that we're gonna be interpretive signs, acknowledging signs that are gonna be pretty neat, saying this is a, a green park that's been designed with eco-friendly elements. Those kinds of signs ought to be considered for, uh, just the quality of what we've wanted for this placemaking park. There's a fountain that was planned that someday might happen. There's a lake map that could be in the plaza that looks pretty, uh, kind of bare and open right now, and I think it could be a lot more, have a lot more character if that were pursued. I know people can do that through the foundation, but the, um, uh, trail signage was left out, and that's a big item. It, uh, was paid for. I don't think it should be left off the list. I don't think it should be on a wish list. I think it should be actually put into place, and I don't know who's gonna pay for it, but it was paid for at one time, it just needs to be brought back in. Uh, my last pitch is, we've got swing benches, swinging benches, we've got benches along the seawall where people can watch the boat people launching and coming back, and those are gonna be fun things to see when they get done. Can't wait for some of this people-friendly parking, park spots along the trails, so the senior citizens can have a place to sit and we can have picnics. But the seawall itself, people come off the lake and they, um, what do we have, 20,000 boaters on Lake Coeur d'Alene? We've got people at lake homes, we've got people at marinas, they come in from the lake. The park doesn't look right yet. We need to decorate, do some character building along that seawall. I really think the Harbor House is cool. Sorry, the bathroom wasn't bigger. The, um, and I could use a drink of water, but I'll quit now and you won't have to worry about. Sat through a long, dry meeting. The, um, seawall could have some artwork, could have some, uh, plantings, could have some lighting, could have some, uh, maybe water features that work on it. Get Ellen Dodge and Mary, uh, Mary De and Harold Belais to do some decor along there. It really doesn't look right. We left it out because we didn't know we were gonna have a launch ramp, it was gonna be a skate rink, some other features from the water side that didn't happen. Don't forget it. Thank you.
Good, Sandy. Anyone else wishing to come up to give a public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. Do we have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Mr. Mayor, a move that we enter into executive session is provided by Idaho Code 67-2345, subsection B, to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent or a public school student, and subsection F, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, no discussion, roll call.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Etinger?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. We will move into executive session.